Recite committee today is February the twenty first, two thousand twenty four. It is one P M. And we're at the G S B room number three. And I would just ask, minutes are being recorded by?
The school board staff.
Okay, perfect, very good.
And it's all also being video recorded.
Very good. So the agenda asked call to order and then we'll presume we will also get started with the pledge. If you'd all stand and join me in the pledge. I.
Hello. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So welcome in introductions. I think I shot that bullet. So but wel- welcome again. Do we have new members here today from our last meeting?
Yes.
I am Will Ferry, Chairman of Flagler County School Board. Nice to be with you all.
Nice to meet you. And everyone else has attended before.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Very good. Any comments from any members before we get started? All right, then let's dig into it. We were all set minutes from the August twenty fourth meeting, so I would ask now if there are any changes or corrections to the minutes that were provided to the members.
Then I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion for a approval and a second. Any other discussion? Then all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And Secretary has the count. Okay, you do. Okay, very good. Mr. Whitson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just kind of give you an update from when we met last. August was quite a long time ago. Had a lot happen since then. So just to kind of set the stage and bring everybody up to speed. This is the I L A policy oversight group. Underneath this group is your staff. And we have communicated quite a bit. Every jurisdiction has, in some cases, multiple staff members that I work with, all the way down to one or two. And we stay in touch and we go with the numbers. We go over the development activity. We dig into the details of everything that's happening because the I L A is the sets the framework on how the process should work. And basically, since your last meeting in August, the I L A group has reviewed the annual report that was provided on August sixteen that you saw. And it's my understanding that some of the local governments actually went and provided that same report to your local governing boards. And so all of that activity has taken place. And it's basically the job of the I L A Oversight Committee here to kind of review that annual report to kind of get a good idea of what kind of development activity is happening in the community, exchange information and begin planning for the future. So that's basically what we've done at this point. And later on, we'll have that specific items to mayor to discuss if you would like to get into the details of that. Then basically, we, if you recall, the Davis demographic folks were hired to dig into the student generation rate, which is for every home that's built, for every apartment that's built. It's going to generate statistically a certain number of students, which we have to plan for. And then all of those details and and information were gone over by the working group again after you left. And we dug into all of that information and all the projections. We also dug into the district's five-year work plan. Every year, this district has to submit to the state of Florida a work plan for, okay, how we're going to take these funds and plan for schools. Are we going to renovate facilities? Are we going to add to facilities? What are we going to do with these revenues? And so we went over all of that. It was interesting. One of the reasons that this meeting was delayed from, if you recall, you had said it on November fifteen. Well, the state of Florida was a little bit tardy in their efforts to get the five-year work plan process going. And so with that and the delay of the Davis information, we wanted to really dig in the details, make sure that we had it all right. And so we delayed this meeting and this report to you until today. So in the meantime, we've gone back and and worked through all of that. You have a copy. Your staff has a copy of the five-year work plan. It's been on the website of the school board for some time now. The school board members are here. They've been over it several times. So that's where we are with that. That was a big piece of the missing information and now that gap has been filled in. We've also initiated some new efforts to update the student generation rate. The Davis study used the twenty twenty one data, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two data, because that's all we had at the time. And they did all of their analysis from that. But the I L A calls for us to do to keep that up. In other words, it's a snapshot in time. You can't just get stuck on one set of numbers because I can assure you, the numbers are always changing and always shifting around. There's always housing units being built. There's always people moving in and out. The birth rate is up and down, that kind of thing. And so we have to take all of those moving parts into account. And we have now initiated another effort with a local contractor who is going to build on the Davis effort and some of the other efforts we have going on. And the working group is all involved in that. And we're going to be calling another meeting of that working group to get into the details of the model and how we're counting things and how that's going. And then just to kind of summarize, since you last met in August, obviously, we have almost weekly contact with many of the jurisdictions. But the the full committee with everybody present met on November second. We went over a lot of this same kind of information that I'm sharing with you now. We also met again on January eighteen, again, all in an effort to lay the groundwork for this meeting and to provide you the information you have available. And then on February fifteen, we met with the county one-on-one to go over D R I data. Due to some family illnesses and things, we weren't able to get to the D R I data for Palm Coast. But that's set up. Is that next week?
I think so.
Yeah, next week. So we're what we're doing is we're taking a look at all of the developments that have paid, all of the reservations that are in the system, and we're trying to drill into it. Okay, do we still need to keep that? Do we has that expire? Is that still ongoing? When do we think that will materialize? Because there's about twenty six hundred or so reservations out in the system that, you know, it's like a hotel. They paid for their hotel room. So we can't just sweep it away. They have a development right. And so we are tracking that meticulously. And especially the D R I's, those are the ones that have the bulk of that number. So that's what's been going on since we last met. And again, we, I can't thank each of the jurisdictions enough. I mean, all the staff has just been awesome to work with. They answer our calls. They answer our emails. I probably got bothered them to death, but, you know, they they still take my calls and they still work with us. And so we feel like, from our point of view, staff to this committee, that the process is working very well. And we are tracking all the development. Right now, again, the numbers always shift and change, right? But over the next decade, you're looking at a little more than sixteen thousand units in the planning process between Flagler County, Vanel, Palm Coast, Flagler Beach, everybody all in, sixteen thousand one hundred and something. That's over a ten-year period, right? Those aren't going to all come in at once. So we've been tracking that and trying to figure out, okay, how do we plan for the future? So that's kind of my report at this point.
Will, could I just ask a question?
Sure.
Just help me with this. Twenty six hundred reservations. Could you just define a reservation for us? In other words, what I'm really asking is, is that a development, a dwelling unit? What? Give me a magnitude there.
Some of them are single-family units. Some of them are apartments, but most of them are single-family.
And I only ask because.
They're vested units.
What's that?
It's vested units. So it's something.
So.
We're holding we're holding capacity in the schools.
No, no.
So those are those are seats.
That's what a reservation is.
The reservations are seats.
Seats. Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay, that makes now I get it. Because if it was apartments versus a single family, it makes a big difference.
Yeah.
And and we are based upon the generation ring to determine
how many seats would.
And I guess I would obviously ask the question on the sixteen thousand plus units. What just define unit for me, what you're thinking those represent.
There's ten thousand five hundred housing units, single-family housing units, and a little over five thousand five hundred and something multifamily.
Understood. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Question. Piggybacking on the reservation, what's the oldest reservation that we're holding?
It's the D R I's.
I know, but how old are they? What's the oldest one we have on the books?
It is, I would, it's it's either the Hunter's Ridge.
That's what I was going to say.
Is probably the oldest and then Plantation Bay are probably the two oldest.
There's four of them. There's there's Hunter's Ridge, Plantation Bay, and then we have.
Palm Coast Park.
Palm Coast Park.
And then Town Center.
I think Hunter's Ridge is the oldest.
Yeah.
Olkings Road, and those are not a part of any of this, right?
Yeah.
Ah, Olkings.
So we're lucky in the sense that, you know, we can count it right off the top of our head. There's only four big D R I's, but.
Yeah, we were. We met with Adam, and I think Adam is here, and and were able to deconflict the Hunter's Ridge developments and the Plantation Bay developments. And I know that Ray and I are going to meet next week to do the other two D R I's. And we we want to make sure that we're not double counting any reservations. We were able to clean some up. We took some off when we met with the county and then they we had to add some, you know, very few on just to make sure that our number of units were accounted for. So we hope to do that with the city.
So so the process is complicated, obviously. You all know, you sit on these boards and you'll approve three thousand units. Well, how many of those three thousand units were built? And when did they build build them? When do they expect the rest to be built if they only built half of them? So that's the kind of thing we dig into.
The the starting line pistol for adding them is when? When would you begin to count them as of the current agreement?
Well, when they we take them out when they C O'd.
Right.
Yeah.
But if it's something new, so.
Something new.
County or city approves a new development of X number. When do you begin to count them?
When we get a prop share agreement.
I'm sorry?
Prop share agreement.
So during the concurrency period, the prop share agreement, that would be the.
They reserve.
And the board and you all.
You approve the.
Approve those things.
So I'm sorry. So it's part of the actual development order.
When you approve.
Vote.
When you approve it, we've all we've all said there there's capacity where there isn't and they've paid and we're reserved.
But you're not counting it until we actually voted forward.
Correct.
As a development order.
Correct.
Because those development orders may not actually show up for another six months to a year.
It it's a way for the developers, under the law, if we didn't have seats, they couldn't build.
No, no, no. I appreciate that, but.
So this is a way to jumpstart that.
Because you'll you'll know about a development of X number of seats could be six months, twelve months, two years before it becomes a development order.
That's correct.
But you're not counting it until it's a development order.
Once we get the prop share.
No, no. If they pay us, if they come to us to.
So if they pay a reservation fee in advance of the development order, you are counting it.
We are counting it.
Which could be a couple of years in advance.
Could be.
Could be.
Depends on when they start.
They have a certain period of time in the agreement to.
Is frequently, and.
Yeah.
We don't know for sure, but is has happened. Okay, got it.
So this was something that when we met and we threw the all before we struggled with, which is, and I think to Mr. Dance's the comment too, which is, what do you do with these old ones? I mean, it's still a right that if you guys vote to take away that they have, they can say, well, you got to pay me for that. Or there's some some interest in that right. And so how do we deal with it? And so there's two two issues. One is the very old ones that we're just holding. And the other issue is how we do it going forward.
Okay, good point.
And just for posterity, if I may, how how old are the actual oldest?
I don't know. I was, do you know the days?
Hunter's Ridge is two decades.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was like when I first got on the board, probably like two thousand four or something.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, I would say before, right around two thousand.
I mean, if the local jurisdiction, if you guys wanted to go back and take something up and say.
Even older, ninety one for Hunter's Ridge.
Is it ninety one?
You lose your development rate. You have to talk to your council about how you would do that.
The whole shebang.
And and how you would notice the people properly all that time.
So the impetus would be on the jurisdiction of the municipality, whatever, to start that process.
Yeah, you guys.
Clean up.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You guys have approved the units, so we.
Right.
So that's why we work closely with you. We don't go around changing numbers or anything. We we say, okay, where is it in the process and how do we count it?
Questions for Mr. Whitson from his report from any of the members?
You know, I do have one, Mr. Chairman. Just looking at the student enrollment data snapshot, which kind of summarizes where we are. The big difference now is, you know, as as the overall school population obviously is going up quite a bit when you look at totals. But the actual students in in our public schools has has really just stayed the same. So when we we get these estimates of where we're going, I know it's complicated and it's involved. And I'm not even challenging any of that stuff. But it's it would seem like, I like this way of presenting it a lot better than just total number of students because it it's it's really critical because we have to decide. A lot of what we do here is is who who we have to get ready for. And maybe maybe at some age, the children go to private school. And in some age, they might be doing homeschooling. And then as they get further along the process, they go so. I don't know. How do how good are we at breaking that down and predicting what that's going to look like? Because it seems to me a lot of the predictions we've made, if you went back ten years or the last time we met, say, three years ago or something like that, a lot of the predictions seem to not correspond to what reality is. That that would be.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying anybody's wrong on that. I'm just saying it's difficult to do. I think our county is unique in a lot of ways because of the population diversity, age and all that. And so it's hard to make decisions, is what I'm saying. And so I don't know if anything's happened from when I reported to make me feel better about any of that at this point.
Yeah, we received this recently D O E or I wouldn't, I guess that's not D O E. It's the Office of Economic and Democratic Research, which is a legislative arm of the government. We received a Flagler County education profile. I did not hand that out. I was going to include that in this next year's annual report. And there are some good graphs in here.
Just created.
Which shows specifically Flagler County in the enrollment with virtual school, local district, charter and so forth. So we're going to include that in this next annual report. I'm sorry.
Is there a parochial line in there?
Private, yeah.
And private as well. Yes, sir.
They show all the school choices.
And then it has a population distribution for Flagler County. And it's it's some telling information that.
We'll look forward to that. May I ask you a question? This is more from my education, I would guess. Kids that are not actually attending our bricks and mortar school, do any of these fees support their education?
Charter schools.
I mean, if you're homeschooled, for example, is there any portion of these fees that are directed for anything that's done with regard to?
Are you referring to a scholarship?
Yeah, I don't. Are you talking about choice? Are you talking?
No, no, no. I'm talking about the. Concurrent fees go towards the facility, the building.
Right, right. That's what I thought.
Yeah.
But there's no, okay, so there's no element in that bricks and mortar building that would be expensed for kids that are not attending in the building? In other words, like a homeschool kid?
I would say that's correct.
Okay.
The the report we got from the state, you know, they have all of these new scholarships and, you know, and their school choice and everything. And so they're beginning to track all that because they tell the state. But, you know, we have to find it out secondhand.
And a virtual, a student that's virtual at home, is there any piece of our bricks and mortar that transmits their virtual education to their home?
Well, some of our virtual students will come into campus to.
Yeah, I actually have a daughter who attends F L B S and has since kindergarten.
Okay.
They come in and out.
She so she goes to her zone school for testing, for state testing. It's also my understanding that should she want to participate in any activities per statute, she would be allowed as an F L B S student to go to that. But to my knowledge, that's the.
All right. And I'm not trying to get in the weeds here. I just want to understand that when we break out these categories of students, that if we if we take them away, there's no expense for any of these collections or reservations or commitments that is directed towards those students.
Let's dig into that question and make sure we're absolutely clear on that. I would say off the top of my head, no, but let I think that's a great question and we can get into that.
So we'll go save that.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
When you look at this student enrollment snapshot, I think what Commissioner Sullivan is saying is is true. You just don't know.
Right.
Number is so fluid. But at the end of the day, we have to be prepared for students to return if they choose to return.
Right. Or hold our breath for very long periods of time.
Well, it doesn't, I mean, the bottom line is you have to have a seat for those students.
Well, can I just add to that?
I'm sorry. Schools are required to have seats for everyone. So even though they're, even though it's a homeschool person or a virtual school person, even tomorrow, they could say, I'm going to go to.
Right.
In a one-to-one ratio. So for every.
Seats for everybody. Understood.
So, okay, we'll get there. My apologies. I jumped over.
Mine's a different topic, but if you wanted to finish up on that.
All right. So if you let us finish it up. So, okay. I appreciate that you have to have it ready. So then the onus is on that assumption. Because those assumptions are, as Commissioner Sullivan said, a hazy crystal ball.
Yeah.
So now we have to now we have to dig in. Okay, what are we really accountable for?
So at the end of the day, there's a total of like.
That never actually comes to fruition is not exactly.
But we don't know that, Mayor.
Or nor do we know that it'll happen.
Right, correct. We don't know either or.
Right.
Two examples that in talking to our registrars that are common is that homeschool, we we see people start homeschool and then they come into the system. The other one is when they go to charter school and they top out at, say, seventh, eighth grade, then they come back into the system for high school. So there's a couple of examples we know of as to how it's working.
Can I just, and maybe this is irrelevant to share, but I want to share it. I'm going to speak as one school board member. Our hope, and I think what we all show up for, is to get our district to be an A district. I believe all five of us are very excited about LaShaka Moore as our superintendent and her vision for Flagler Forward. So the numbers that are today of those who are not participating in the brick and mortar schools, our hope and expectation is that year over year, we're going to see numbers increasing of students returning for our classroom to careers, for our excellent program for Flagler schools. So I hear everything you're saying. We don't quite know, but it is our hope and expectation that we are going to have more and more students here.
And I appreciate that because that reinforces Colleen's point that, you know, should it happen, you got to be ready because you can't go backwards and you can't be ready if.
Yeah, and Dr. Conlin brings that up a lot, and I agree.
Good.
And it's statute.
Chair Dance, I apologize.
That's okay.
Humbly.
It's it's really, I don't know if it's the right time, but as we were talking about prop share, in the development review process, there's a disconnect during the review process with the public about approving developments and their experience with crowded schools. So I don't know that we're getting the message across about developments paying their share for access and for future seats. And I don't know if it's if it's something that we incorporate into our development reviews. I know you guys participate in that. And we have, you know, we we have to make sure that there's capacity you sign off. But I don't know that the message is clear to the public about why we're approving these developments when their children are experiencing crowded classrooms and that and that these developments are paying their seats in advance. So so just something to think about as we that we potentially in our processes of of that public comment period or the 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 public disclosure of these of these projects. That clarify that a little bit.
Could expand that. And beyond this, just the general concept of concurrency is not well understood by the public because we're hearing it at every meeting these days. And so, yeah, but very good thought.
And it's it's a constant, you know, why is this being approved? The schools are crowded. They don't get it.
Can I ask Dave then a question on that?
Sure.
As far as our five-year plan, because within the school board, this has come up obviously a few times. And we talked about the land that we own. And it always feels just very uncertain of like, well, maybe Rimfire will be a middle school. Maybe is to Andy's point, is there something that can be developed that shows whether it is an animated, something that shows like this is the potential five-year outlook of development? Like, do you have any ideas of how we could better communicate that of like where we're? So there's all these new developments and where we're headed from a school district standpoint of buildings and campuses and whatnot?
I think I think it's a good staff question. Something we pass on to them maybe, but the I just I just think a a clear presentation about a new development buying their seeds and that this is for the future. They're not here yet. These things take time to build infrastructure, get roofs up and children in classrooms. It's just it's it's part of that.
Is this an annual report addendum where there's something written in our each of our annual reports to?
I think it's right. They're paying attention to the development review process.
Project by project.
Project by project.
I think I think Andy's point, though, is when you are a community member and you're driving around and you see a new development going up and you're, why are why are these all being approved? Communicating the statute and and the reasons and all the rest of it is probably super important.
So.
When I say the same.
You know, if we're looking for a way to communicate this better to the public, you know, we have, you know, future land use maps and we have overlays over the property appraisers map. You know, you can you can overlay many different things. What if we had an overlay of student stations, a button there where you could quickly click on that and it would then put an overlay over over a property and see what student stations it has produced, right? If we're looking for more transparency on what that looks like. So if somebody did see an area that was approved for something, they could just literally put that and they would see how many student stations rather than a lot number, right? I mean, just just a a simple way to communicate that out there.
To to Chair Dance's comment to staff, I mean, a question I would throw staff is, should this be a part of the developer's presentation that they clearly speak to this point when they're presenting to either the county or the city or whoever it might be? That that this has been taken care of?
Brother Roger, Jason DeLorenzo, Steve Palm Coast. Mayor, I I think I get what you're saying, right?
It's not part of what I hear in their presentations.
Right, but it also, I don't know, I think it's a little bit double-edged. All right. So for one, because we have so much reserved capacity, right? We're holding so many seats in abundance until someone actually takes that seat. I'm not sure that that would be helpful to the public. I mean, we could include it as that, you know, this was reviewed by the school district for capacity. But that occurs at every time. I don't know that we pointed out so much in every in every one.
I don't remember that being specifically pointed out, no.
Mr. Whitson serves on our planning board and he's there, so he knows directly when, you know, items are are coming through and they're being approved. And it is part of our checklist that we have to have that from the school district before we can go on. So I suppose if you think it would be good for education for the public to include it, we could we could include it. I think it does add some confusion, though.
Not the data, just the concept that it's been reviewed by the school.
Right.
And comfortable that that the number of student stations will be available when they're when they're needed, not the numbers. I'm not asking that.
And and the fact that we are doing a student generation rate. I mean, we're doing that every year, at least we're we're going to do that this year. And then by the I L A, it says that we need to do it next year. So that will keep that in check. So whatever development comes in will be under, you know, here's the latest one-year-old student generation rate.
Has that been brought up as opposition to development? Where are these kids going to school? I mean, has that been brought up?
Every week, every week at my meetings.
That is specifically, okay.
Yes, specifically.
Specifically.
Okay, well, and not, and don't let me, not just that, there's another 10 things. But that is one of them.
On the list.
And it is on the minds of the folks that come to the meetings.
All right, so thank you, didn't mean to get this that far off the rails, so it can continue.
I know this is very cornholly, you know, and all that kind of comment by me, but our government is called a republic, a representative form of government, and we're elected essentially to these positions. And we don't expect the, the, everyone who lives in the county to understand how the budget process works, what pots of money are there, so on and so forth. So I say to a degree, in my, you know, limited knowledge, that sometimes you just have to grin and bear it. You do the best to explain to people when they bring these, these comments up. We are never gonna get the public in general to understand how the budgeting system works, and it gets more complicated all the time. So I, I, I think it's up to us to make sure we get the facts correct and that we at least understand how the, how the process works. And I'm, I mean, that's what I think. I, I, I think it's good to educate the public, give them a chance to speak, we have committees, all that kind of thing. But in the end, uh, we're the representatives of the people and we're supposed to make these decisions.
So that makes you a no on the forensic audit.
On the what?
Never mind.
On the forensic audit.
I'm sorry, I wanna keep it going.
Mayor, can I ask a process question for clarification? My understanding was when there were some developments in the past that were before us, that yes, the school district signs off, right, a checklist kind of process. But by law, the school district cannot stop a development. Is that true or false? That has always been my impression.
Local governments are not supposed to proceed with development where there's not public facilities. And that applies to schools and water and everything else.
But if you have the capacity, you're required to...
Yeah, no, if there's school capacity, you come check with us and there's capacity. We see there's capacity, then there's public facilities available.
So does the reservation represent, that, that is what represents the capacity? Not, not the physical, physical school? That's why they're able to move on with the development? Because we're saying, "We will have that seed available when your project is built."
Yes, sir. The other reality is that you have to, you have to grow enough to be able to fill another school.
Right.
Because you can't open a new school with 10% of the kids, you can't afford to do that. So there's gotta be some, some stretch before, before you can...
And my apologies, we, I know we...
No, no, I appreciate the conversation.
It's a great conversation.
But does that, does that answer your question almost?
Almost.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll wait till the end.
It's not an easy question, okay, very good.
And if it's helpful anyway, again, working with the staffs have been great, but I also sit on the planning board for Palm Coast, the county. Uh, I haven't been invited to Flagler Beach yet, but there's not that much development. But Nell, I, I come to your meetings. So it's been great in terms of the cooperation.
Good, very good. Questions?
So then if there are no further questions, I think we would go right to the staff reports and start with Flagler County?
Well, no, the actual, uh, 23 report. Is any comments or any reason that we can't just move on with that, um, report that, that was listed in, uh, in your packet? The 22, 23 report from August, the annual report.
So I guess, I mean, on the table, are there any questions regarding that report? That's the next item on the agenda.
Yeah.
That's the one in your packet.
Mm-hmm, yes. That data came from the jurisdictions we've, as I kind of outlined with you. We've gone over it multiple times with your staffs.
You need it approved, you need a motion, okay.
We haven't been that formal here, so I don't think it's necessary. So next up would be Palm Coast. And I would ask staff to fill us in.
While they're getting the presentation up, Jason DeLorenzo again, City Palm Coast. Okay, there we go. So we're, we apologize, we haven't been able to complete our full report yet, but this is all the residential data you'll need to, as you look to the past and forward, okay? So we're gonna start with, where do I point? Towards this way, there we go. Okay, so starting with looking backwards a little bit, right? So these are COs, so that means the, the house has been built and someone most likely lives in it at this point, right? So we had 1,933 single-family units, 407, uh, single-family attached. That includes duplexes and townhomes. Um, you're probably familiar with the townhome project that is going in north of Belter. Uh, that is a lot of those units right there. And then 300 multifamily units for a total of 2,640. This is same information shown graphically. So we had about, um, about 585 units more, single-family. And as you know from living in this community, apartments are kind of hit or miss. Sometimes we'll go five years without an apartment, sometimes we'll have two back-to-back, but they're really hit or miss. Uh, starting to look a little bit forward, uh, these are permits issued. So most of these are either recently completed or still under construction, but have not been issued a CO, so they don't have anyone living in them. You can see that we've slowed down significantly, uh, going from 1,739 single-family units in '22 to 1,339 single-family units in 2023. And some of that is made up with some multifamily projects that are currently under construction and will come online either this year or next. Again, same information just shown graphically. And these are the final plots and technical site plans that were approved during 2023. Represents a total of 2,771 dwelling units. But similar to your conversation that you, you just about started with, is we can't tell you when or when not, but these are going to start. Some of them have started, some of them have, you know, we, we have no idea when they'll, when they'll get under construction or start generating stu-, uh, students. And that is all the residential data.
And as of today, what, we know that these aren't all going to be finished at the same time, but what is the current student generation rate that would be applied to that number, assuming they were all gonna be finished on the same day?
We're still using the 2021 rate.
What is the number roughly?
Twenty-three, roughly 23 students for every 100 homes on single-family.
Twenty-three per, okay.
Point two-three.
Got it.
Jason, is the Ocean Village one, the one in Palm, uh, Flagler Beach on Roberts Road?
No, this are, uh, no, Ocean Village is on State Road 100. They haven't cleared a treat yet, yeah.
Yeah.
And I would like to add that when the concurrency application comes to the school board, there is a block on there that we ask the developer, "When do you project out? How many units do you project out this year?" And so we do track those in our database. And then William's task is, you know, every six months, reach out to that developer. "Hey, are you on track? No, we, we slipped, we're continuing to go to the right." Or, "We accelerated and now we have this many units." And we want to, um, you know, we're, can, we're, we're gonna meet with City of Palm Coast to make sure that those COs are, when, when they get COs, that we take that reservation off. And that's something that we have been, you know, we haven't done a, a very good job of doing that and we want to do better, so we are doing a, about every six months, I think, we want to meet with the municipalities to have them give us a report. So when that CO is done, we can remove the reservation.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, that's a really important part, right? Because particularly when there's so many reservations out there. So that's kind of true up of, hey, that, that's not a reservation anymore, that's an actual student, so we're not, they're not getting double counted. Right, yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Dan?
What is the, the, the kind of the lag between our demographic information and the real-world data when, when they kind of come together? Do we have kind of like a, a pulse on that? Um, so that, you know, are, do we have where, where, you know, we see the, the actual, uh, uh, no longer reservations, but these are now going to be built? Uh, where we, we're gonna see a large surge at one time, or does, does it come in more incrementally?
Uh, well, it's really project to project, okay? So a single-family project is gonna come in slowly, right? You're gonna have 18 months to 24 months of just, you know, flat work done, right? Roads, infrastructure, all that stuff, before a house is ever gonna be built. And then you have the lag time of the house being built as well. And then they're gonna come ons in tens and twenties at a time or something like that.
Because they're phased, like, once it's developed and all the infrastructure's there, then, then usually they, they phase these projects?
Yeah, we're usually seeing phases of roughly 100 units.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why the six-months true-up discussion's important. Plus, when they submit, they, the developers submit the paperwork to us before we process these concurrency agreements. They'll say, "Okay, I project this many units, I project this many units. Is that law, like, we can penalize them?" No, but, but they do give us an idea of when those are supposed to be coming online.
But, but the interest rate's gonna have a lot to do with that.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm sure it will. Yeah, Mrs. Sullivan.
When we look at that list that's up there right now, um, and we're using the 21-year, you know, the, the study we did in, in a few years back, do we, do we take into account if some of those are over 50, over 55 communities?
Yes.
And is that the reason we need to do this new study? You talked about that we're just, the first one that the state is doing specifically for Flagler County? Because if you just lump those all together, whether they're over 55 or not, the student generation rate might not be the same. And maybe that new way of looking at things would give us a better handle on that.
What new study?
Are you talking about the...
It's not a new study, the state, the thing you mentioned.
Two different things.
Yeah, the demographic information.
Where they break it down.
That will help us.
Yeah, we, we actually, for the student generation rate, we do not include 55 and older in that count because there shouldn't be any students living there.
What, what we do is when we see those developments come in, our attorneys talk to the developer and we include language in the development agreement.
I mean, I'm just saying, when we were looking at this graphic here, we haven't made that separate.
There's a penalty.
Okay, appreciate that. And just for clarification, 55 plus, there is a percentage...
That's what I was gonna ask.
That you actually can have kids.
I don't believe so. It depends upon the C and R.
That's why we review the CNRs as they come in.
Okay.
But they're not counted?
But there's no, there's no reservations for 55 and over?
No.
Not at all?
No.
We did have one, and I, I think it was in Palm Coast, that they were talking about a 80-20 split, but then that was, I think they changed that.
Changed.
And that was written in the CNR, so covenant restriction. And so we did that percentage initially, but then when they changed it to all 55, we took it out.
Okay. And does that count, like, for example, over in, um, the Grand Reserve? Like, they have different phases in there, but there is one carved out in there that's just 55 and over. So it's that, that specific portion of that larger development still not counted because it's just designated 55 and over, even though it's part of that larger community?
Yep.
Yeah, it is sectioned out, okay.
Yeah, and also, I like the apartments in Town Center. So you have a group of apartments in Town Center that are 55 plus, which I assume are not, are not counted in, so.
But that account, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, that counts against the total number for Town Center DRI, those 55 and older.
Count total dwelling units.
Total, total dwelling units.
That are entitled, right.
So, right, so those would be, I guess, removed.
Right, good.
And are those covenants pretty much running forever? Or is that something that an association could, in the future, come together and meet? So you know what, the 55 and over no longer is viable, can it be changed?
They're restricted by deed.
Okay, so it is a deed restriction.
Yes, to change them, you usually need an overwhelming majority, which is possible to get.
Yeah, so it's, it's a big deal, it would take a major effort to overturn it.
If, if it was even possible.
Right, and we, we track, um, students for picking up with our buses. And if we see that there are students that were picking up in a 55 and older community, we reached out and tell them, hey...
Just, just to, you know, finish my question then. So as of the last 10 years, uh, when we do reservations that are gonna be required, you've already been taking the 55 and over communities out of those, sort of, out of that policy, okay?
Jason, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We move to, uh, Banel.
Well, Flagler County also, did you skip Flagler County?
I did them first.
Okay.
All right, you got more?
Uh, is Adam here, or did y'all want to...
I'm sorry, I apologize, I thought you'd already kind of given yours.
We did do Flagler.
Okay.
I didn't see Adam over there. Trying to get our C and R information, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna think as best I can. Adam, over, management director. We have most of our growth, don't have a PowerPoint. Uh, we have most of our, our growth happening within the, um, the south end of the county in the Plantation Bay, DRI, and Hunter's Ridge. And so within Hunter's Ridge, we've had two plats now approved, um, north of Airport Road, uh, within an area that is not with the age restriction. The airport is doing that development, it's called Orment Station. It's roughly right around 200 units so far with them and, uh, and more to come. And so that they're, they're then coming right now. Rate we're going with those, the final plat was just approved on Phase One of the second subdivision now that we have north of Airport Road. Uh, so they're, they're coming pace-wise, uh, I think they have model homes so far is all that we have.
Yeah, I guess if there was a warning, Hunter's Ridge is growing.
Yes.
So it's where it's been stagnant, the new owners are very aggressive and they're, they're putting out product.
And are you saying there's a section of it that's 55 and older?
No. Well, I don't know.
There was, yes, south of Airport, excuse me. And, and so that was age restriction. And how we handle the age restriction, we will actually take a resolution to the board to recognize the age restriction, to formalize it in the CNR. So it's a little, little harder, back to your question, Mr. Chair, that it was, if you end up having, uh, if they can change it, you know, effectively, there's not a whole lot of control that we'd have if they put in the CNRs. They, they can amend it, but through the resolution that we would adopt by the board, uh, we're, we're thinking kind of belts and suspenders, hopefully we can kind of...
And then they have to pay current impact fees.
Yes, are they right? That's how, that's what we call for in there. If they change that, they'd have to actually, uh, maybe potentially make a rears, uh, to make it all...
So it's not gonna happen.
Fix it up.
That's, that's Huntington Woods?
Yes, yeah, the Huntington, Huntington Village projects, most of those, uh, south of Airport, uh, south of Airport Road in, in Hunter's Ridge are, are age restriction. I think I'm saying the same post.
322 or something like that.
Yeah, something like that, yeah. Then we had, um, Brandon Bay, uh, that remains for now in the uncorporate area. We do have three model homes. That's all that I'm aware of that's been issued so far. That's the area down off of John Anderson. I'm thinking what else we have. I think that's just about it for the larger developments that we have. I can't remember anything else coming.
A little bit of Wexford Cove, that's all.
Little odds, lots of odds ends. Uh, do have then also formerly Eagle Lakes Radiance Project that still is kind of moving along.
No, that was, that was us.
Still us.
Still us.
Heavy four-shine.
That's 1,600 homes.
Yeah, and that, that, moving very slowly. And so I don't know, we don't have yet any, any horizontal infrastructure coming in. And so what I've been reporting now to Mr. Whitson, Mr. Freeman, is a spreadsheet that we'll go through and we'll track platted lots, uh, permits issued and COs in those developments. And so I think that's something that, that's gonna work well for us, at least in the larger developments. So that my, my goal with that is to be able to give school district as much lead time as I can, showing the plats so that we know those are gonna be something that, that we're gonna have some vertical development happening. Permits that leading a little closer on that timeframe. So we have a permit, we're expecting something maybe closer to timeframe that Jason was talking about, that you're having, you know, maybe eight to, eight months to, to a year then, uh, before that's gonna actually have kids in, in the homes. So hopefully we can report that, uh, to the, to the benefit of the district. Yes, sir.
Is there still an agreement with Volusia on accepting students out of county?
I believe so.
Because I was wondering if Wexford, actually being right there on the property, on the county line, has taken, if any students have been acquired from Wexford.
They're six months out, is what the last report I received, uh, from actually getting started on rooftops, so...
Oh, no, you haven't been out there lately.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, well, maybe he didn't exactly tell me what was going on, but that was the last report.
Other than the Flagler side, I don't know that there's many lots that don't have construction going on.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, there's 81 units, I think.
81 is what?
I don't remember.
It's 81.
But it would be, I mean, it's a, we get some from, I think we've gotten students from Halifax Plantation into the county, but...
I know, I, I, because I've gotten emails about students wanting to cross the line, so, yeah.
Okay.
It happens.
Well, there's so proximity.
Right. The bus goes right by.
Right.
Sean? Yes, Sean Moyle, Deputy County Attorney. I just had a couple of brief comments to follow up in what Adam was saying. This process now that we've re-engaged in the past few years has come a long ways. And I think that staff and elected officials have really grappled with it quite well. It is, as you can tell, it's a complicated thing. And we're a lot further along than we were just a few short years ago. There's still more to do. I'm sure we'll talk about that, the lands that are needed for new schools. But we've come a long ways. The reservations have been a point of consternation in the past because we have to hold those seats available for a development that we're not sure when it's going to come. But that Hunter's Ridge example is a perfect example of why we do have to hold those seats. Got approved in 1991 and just recently has really started taking off. We're getting a lot of plats that have come in in the past year and are forthcoming. So just a perfect example of why those reservations do need to be held. And the staff are doing their level best to keep track of it and to eliminate those reservations when they're no longer needed. And then just a quick point, I don't know if, William, if you were going to mention this, but last summer, the school board's consultant came out with their report to predict enrollment. And this is, it's almost mind-boggling. They take in the mobility rates and birth rates and all these graphs and charts, but the bottom line is what's the growth, what is the number? And they came out with their prediction on the growth of enrollment in the school district last summer. And then when the actual numbers came in in October, it was almost dead exact. Was it 197 or something?
It was, yeah, 198 was the projection and the actual...
The actual was 198.
Actual was 198, but theirs was 197.8 or something like that.
That .8 kid.
That was incredible. So we'll see if it continues that way, but it just, to me, it was very... That was all.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the county?
From anyone on the table?
Okay. Sorry, I missed you guys first. So am I correct that Benell would be next?
Yes, sir. So, I don't know, Joe's here?
Yeah. Joe Parsons, City of Benell. So likewise, we do not have a presentation, I apologize. The majority of our development is the R Board and Development Grand Reserve, and we're on our final two phases. We've got some other projects that are in the pipelines. We've got some that are approved, we've got an apartment complex that's been approved. It's 240 units initially. All these, of course, have been in communication with the county school board.
Where's that located?
It's going to be all 100, just west of the intersection of...
Gotcha.
That's Porchway?
Yes, Porchway, yes. So we've got some other ones that are, you know, entered into pre-application meetings that seem promising, but, you know, as has been echoed already, you know, development's interesting. We look at Palm Coast, the development of Palm Coast by I P T, and we're still not to fruition with that development. So there's ebbs and flows with development. And sometimes, you know, the permitting process takes so much time, a two or three-year period, and then construction of infrastructure, and then the economy's gone, it doesn't support the development of homes. So it's a guess sometimes, so we do the best we can.
Is multifamily a part of Flagler Central Commerce? Is it all business industrial?
It is currently zoned all industrial.
Okay.
Now, will we see some changes in that possibly? There's been some discussions, but nothing has come to gut.
So you'd be receptive if somebody wanted to do a lanes change for apartments?
We'd like to see the industrial to remain on the back half closer to U S 1, but we're open to some changes on the side of it here.
And when does that construction start?
In March.
Okay.
We got a rhythm cutting. Okay, good.
Good stuff, we're excited about it.
Any other questions about Benell Report? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Of course, thank you.
Next is Flagler Beach.
Aaron Miller, Flagler Beach.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
There's really no changes from what the data that you have presented, basically. We just CO another unit in the Preserve, which is another 30 seats. And there's two left to go, and then it'll be completely done. The KB Homes, I believe that three or four permits came in already that are being under review. There may be more, I am not privy to the exact number. But there is one change. The apartment complex that was going to go up down on, oh, what was the name of it? It was 37 units.
Yes.
The one that was going up on Joyce. Apparently St. John's won't let them use the burrow pit that's there at all, so they had to change their whole outlook on the thing. And now it's, there's two options, and at this point, it's going to go to the commission as to which way they want to go, whether they're townhomes or whether they're duplexes. So those counts are going to change, but other than that, everything's been stable.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any questions for Flagler Beach?
Just a quick update, the development, the single-family development Beach Park Village is 112 units total. And she said, you know, that they're just trickling in the permits. And then the Preserve Apartments was 240, and they CO 180.
It's on Roberts Road, is Roberts Road Flagler Beach or Palm Coast?
Both.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
So where the development is, the one that's basically where we stop and then it goes into Palm Coast.
But the actual units, the units are in Flagler Beach. The Preserve Unit and then the one across the street.
In the development they're talking about, there's multiple developments there.
So apartments are on one side and then on the side where Lodsworth is, that's us still, and then...
So the developments are Flagler Beach.
Yes, yeah, that's Flagler Beach.
They're in Flagler Beach, problem.
I'm sure of that.
And you would like to attend meetings as necessary? You had made comment about that, about attending, I guess, commission meetings at Flagler Beach.
Yeah, I mean, as they see the need.
When needed.
Yeah, but the other jurisdictions with the housing stock being what it is, I attend regularly.
Very good, Karen, thank you very much for the...
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. That concludes all of the jurisdictional reports. Now, the next item on the agenda, I'm not sure if it's premature, it says, we're looking at the schedule for next meeting and all of that, and then it goes to new business. I don't see an old business, so I'm going to just insert, if everybody's okay, an old business comment here because I need a little education. When a reservation is made currently, there is a payment due from the developer? And how is that calculated? Just remind me, I know it's in the V O B H, but...
It's based on the cost per student station times the student generation rate, how many students they're going to be.
Okay.
So if they're going to generate, say, 10 elementary students, we go to a chart published by the state saying this is how much an elementary student station costs this month.
Got it.
And then that's part of the fee calculation.
So just for discussion, and Commissioner Sullivan, this goes back to your point from a long, long time ago. I just want to be clear with the committee whether we are okay or not okay with having folks pay for a reservation so far in advance of any actual development.
So I have been slightly educated on this, and I still don't quite understand.
Okay.
So the conversations that I have had are, Dave, I may be way off here, right? But, hey, Flagler Schools, you have $60 million in the pot, right? That's just sitting there with no, right, so you're going to have to correct everything that I say.
It's okay, it's okay.
But so I'm just saying what I know, what I think I've been told. I see that we just are spending like 25 million, like, on Matanza's expansion. So obviously, school buildings are very expensive. I guess I'm still also trying to figure out why the timing is such that it is collected so far in advance. Because what I think I heard Dave say is we can't, there has to be, like, lead time, right? We have to have that money ready to go and lead time. But I am not educated enough to really fully understand why it is collected, when it is, and what would be the harm if it was collected later? Like, what is the risk in that? And I don't know if I'm understanding what you're asking, but...
Along the same lines.
But I've been questioning how it works.
So you've got the development order point in time, and then you've got the CO point in time. Obviously, we know it can be this much or this much, and nobody has that crystal ball. My question really is based on the future value of money. So when you're collecting monies at this end and the actual CO is this far down the road, the future value of money has increased dramatically. And I'm thinking in economic terms here.
Right.
So it's really a question of fairness, I guess. And the school district has to weigh in because we all agree at the table, and we've agreed before, and I'm sure we agree today, that we're looking for A graded exceptional schools. So we can do nothing to harm that. But I just have to bring that question to the table because I'm not comfortable with the current agreement with the language on the timing of the payments.
Look, one of the things that we did to mitigate was, you don't have to pay it all now. We have this 30%, 30%, 30%, and then 10% at the end. So that helps mitigate some of...
And that came out of this committee.
Yes, and that's been a good tool.
That was the point I was going to make.
Right, we agreed to that. No, we did, and I'm just bringing it up again because, you know, we have an agreement. I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with it because this is sort of a legacy agreement. I want to make sure we're okay. We have new members and all of that.
Because I thought we beat that to death pretty good, right? Where everybody's in agreement with what we came up with. Because it's, you're right, this is a legacy document.
And to their point that we are a much better committee today than we were just a year ago or whenever, so we're just, I'm fine-tuning is all I'm asking to do here. I'm not looking to make a change, I just wanted to make sure that we took the time to discuss this particular issue, which was sensitive and that we are really good.
I appreciate that.
So to Mr. Whits' point, it is over 42 months. So we do give them the three payments.
Okay.
So they're not necessarily paying all of it upfront, which if you look around the state, most other school districts that do concurrency are taking a full payment.
Yeah.
So we've already kind of given that back.
So the pay as you go at CO is no longer a thing in the region? I would dispute that.
What do you mean?
That they pay at CO.
No, that's...
In the region.
I'm talking about concurrency.
Yeah.
When you come in for school concurrency and you do a mitigation agreement, pay, it's not typically scheduled in over three years.
Okay.
We've done that here, so that it's over three years. The other piece is that once the developers come into us before they go to you to get a development order, and once you give the development order, the risk on us is that, and you, is you've already given that out. And now we're chasing someone for payment. And so basically, it's just to be sure that when you go for your people who are concerned about school capacity, that are coming and telling you, you can say, no, no, we have an agreement. We've checked with the school district. Before we issue this development order, they've paid their share, and they're good to go.
So...
So that's why it's in the time, and then they still, they're still paying later.
But we've given the all-clear to Bill, even though we haven't received all the money.
That's correct.
So if they come faster, if they build faster, and we've dealt with this, they'll pay impact fees. And we take it off.
And you feel we're in harmony with the rest of the region and the other districts outside of Flagler County?
I believe so.
I understand they're taking a full payment upfront.
Upfront, meaning what, upfront?
What we used to do.
At development order, yeah.
At order.
Yeah.
At development.
We agree. That's typical, before you, before...
So would you say that we're being more generous?
We are, it's actually more lenient.
I just want to make it really clear, because that's a very valuable point to be able to say.
Can I ask one question? So, for example, if we had another situation like Hunter's Ridge where someone came in, they had all this allocation, and it does take forever for them to actually develop, are we putting ourselves in not as ideal a position today? Because are they locked in to the rate whatever month they come in? Okay, so the money's today, probably won't mesh the money's tomorrow, but because it's the 30, 30, 30, there's a bit of a disadvantage in that regard because if they lock it in today.
Yep.
I can't assume that these rates will go down in the future, but if they build it 20 years later, they're still locked into the 30, 30, 30 at today's rate?
Yeah.
Okay, just for posterity.
Yeah, it kind of goes both ways.
Because we're issuing, the school district is issuing a voucher for units.
But if a development is going to take, if they decide to hold it for 10 years, we're still going to get it within a certain period of time, though. What was that, how many months?
42 months.
So 42 months, regardless of how long they take it, 42 months, all of it needs to be...
But at the rate that was established at the time.
At the beginning.
Opposed to maybe 10 years later.
Right.
But the cap is 42 months, okay, that was my question, yeah. 20 years later, they still get 100.
And if I could just take a moment, Palm Coast staff, so in terms of prop share, are we getting any pushback, any comments, any suggestions from the development community on the current language that we have adopted last, when we agreed to the agreement?
Mayor Rick Iyer, for record, hasn't had any negative feedback or objections.
Good, okay, good.
Mayor, can I just share, because I know this is for the public benefit, and I appreciate Sally's question, and I just wanted to share, there's, I don't want the public to think we have $60 million sitting somewhere. That 60, yeah, right. The $63 million is part of our five-year capital plan. So every single penny of that is allocated in a work plan over the next five years. It may change if there's a priority that comes up versus another, you know, project that was in there. But I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware, and we're not sitting, you know...
This is outside of our boundaries, but I think I'm about to sit on another committee, which is the half cent... Does that work plan show up there? Would anybody know, or you don't know? The Oversight Committee?
You mean for the half penny for the school district?
Yeah. Does the work plan show up in that committee?
Or capital plan?
Yeah.
The five-year capital plan?
Yeah.
Probably not.
Probably not?
Interesting, okay.
I mean, it can.
Because...
No, 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 I'm not asking, I'm not asking.
Yeah, half penny would be to whatever, you know, what is it, technology.
Yeah, whatever's spelled out.
Okay, I don't want to go down there, okay, that's outside of this committee, okay, good.
Speaking on the development orders and the staggered starts, so we talked about what if somebody doesn't meet the schedule and then the different costs of the impact fees. What if they are slow in developing it? If they don't meet their development guidelines and it starts to push out, do they come back to revise your agreement? Do, if it's, we'll use Hunter's Ridge as a development, if it's, they just have not done anything. So at the expiration of your timeline, there's no units. Do you go back and revisit with them for a, is there an expiration, is there an expiration date?
There's an expiration date for the D R I and it's 2035.
Well, these are, we'll just say if it's sub-D R I, let's just say sub-D R I.
If it's a mitigation agreement, if that's what you're referring to?
A prop share.
A prop share, there's the 42 months that we would ask for that payment at the 42 months.
So if they push it, if they haven't built anything, at the end of 42 months, their total is due.
We're still asking for that payment.
Okay.
That was my concern.
Mr. Dance, there's a distinction between the D R Is
Right.
and which are not really happening anymore.
Right.
The D R Is, they got all their rights vested many years ago.
I meant using Hunter's Ridge as a slow-developing project, not as a D R I.
Right.
Okay, so just taking your average project, they're stuck with that timeline of payments, whether they build or not.
Okay.
But the protection for them is they only have to plat so many units as they're ready to move forward with, plat being the trigger for the payments.
Because Hunter's Ridge is interesting because about seven or eight years ago, they took about half of the total area and turned it back into land that's not going to be developed. So that was about, like, 1,000 acres, came back, and it's essentially a park now or unbilled land that won't be built on. Did they have to make some kind of deal on the 42-month thing at that point?
No, no, they were... No, no, they were...
Because that was not platted?
Right, they had a, they had a special deal they set up in the nineties.
Okay, okay.
There was a school site, they decided to not build a school there, but to make a payment to the school district, and they got impact fee credits for that, but, so DRIs are in a separate category.
Okay, okay.
The regular developments would have to pay on that, that timeline of forty-two months, but what they do is they, they break it down into phases to protect themselves.
That's exactly right, yeah, they, they will, the developer will break it down into phase one mitigation agreements, because they know they're going to build phase one.
Okay, so, so each phase would have a forty-two month window?
Would have a different mitigation of...
And that's why when you see these agreements come through, they, we're very specific what it says, what phase it is.
So just to follow up, just to...
That's more than fair.
Forget that development, there's a new development, and they, and they have a hundred acres, and they plat it for a hundred acres, there are going to be this many units there. And then halfway through the process, they say, no, we're gonna, we're gonna give the fifty acre, fifty acres back, and it'll become a park, we're not gonna, we're not gonna put any houses there. Do they get any kind of credit for doing something like that? How would that, or they would have already paid the full fee, the forty-two months?
If they plat it the hundred acres, they would be on the hook for that, the payment for those units across forty-two months.
And it doesn't matter what they do after that.
They tried to change it, I guess they could undo the plat, it's pretty complicated.
Is that your prediction of a market downturn? Well, that could happen.
Yeah, they'd have to go back to the process.
You don't do it.
Have to go back to the whole thing.
We'd have to have another meeting.
I was just wondering.
And I'm afraid they didn't have to do that, because...
Sure, thank you, thank you very much. All right, if, I appreciate the, the information, I think everybody has a pretty clear understanding on what we've discussed now. Is it good? Kind of?
I have a stupid question.
Please.
It's really curious, this development, if I'm understanding correctly, this was all done thirty years ago, and Dave, well, and so let me ask, yeah, and this is a stupid one, it's maybe obvious, but if, so did they pay all of their fees at kind of the rates thirty years ago? Did we get that, is that money being like invested, so that when, it's kind of like come up, right? So that, because now, obviously, like, I think of steel costs five thousand times more, so I'm just kind of, that's the thing, I'm just going at my...
I think your question may be, you know, how was the original ITT development vested? So, Jason, can you answer that real quickly?
Well, ITT prepare, provided all the land for all the schools we currently have.
No, no, but how did they, how did they handle concurrency? And that's already in the system.
There was not.
Didn't have concurrency.
There wasn't, it was pre-concurrency.
School concurrency.
Two thousand eight is when we established...
All right, maybe I'm asking the question wrong, so the ITT lots, for example, are not a part of this discussion?
They are not, they are not.
Why?
Because they predate, they predate the system.
Okay, so, they've been not included?
We have to count them, because they are potential sites for tracking for students.
I'm just wondering if there's any risk in anything, that if, are things being prepaid or not even included from years ago, and then now we finally have to build two new schools ten years from now?
I understand what you're saying, yeah, that's, I don't, that's a good question.
And inflation is such that we literally, with the expansion costing twenty-five million, we're just at risk, because people paid nineteen ninety prices or none at all. So it, that's just the one thing that's been kind of going through my head.
So, I mean, there's an exemption issue, I don't know how to define it, that's a legal question, I guess.
But is it, is it, is it just, I think she's talking more about, yeah, the future value, like you were saying, so they bought it, they bought it, the price ten years ago, it cost, we collected that, so is it just kind of like we're averaging it in with new developments that are coming, or? That's, that's actually a good point.
Or are we investing that money, and so we're keeping up, like what, just...
We're kind of outside of the, it's interesting, and it's very important for this group to talk about the DRIs, because of the fact that they're old and vested for many other reasons, and that we have to count them, and, so, because they could have a CO issued, someone could block in and get a bill of payments, that's why they're important, but for the ILA process and how we're going forward, they're, they're considered vested.
Yeah, they don't do DRIs anymore.
So there's no, there's no going back?
I mean, you can, no one's doing, people are actually getting ready.
And I appreciate that, and I think that we accept that, so very, very good.
Just, just so long as Dave, I trust Dave with everything, that so long as in ten years, if we need two, two new schools, we can pay for that.
Don't screw it up, Dave.
You're on the record now.
Go, Dave.
All right, so the, the next item on the agenda is to schedule the next meeting, so did you have a suggestion for that?
Absolutely.
Because I, I, we thank staff a lot, who's really doing all of the work to get us here today, so I have to rely on you when staff would be comfortable having a next meeting.
Yes, sir, we've talked about that amongst ourselves, and the schedule we'd like to establish is that the working committee would get together next, probably in the, I would say, March, April timeframe, and get everything ready for you to, the ILA actually says June thirteen for, for your next meeting, but we would just say in the June timeframe, and of course, I would work through the process as I did this meeting to set it on everyone's schedule, because I like to try to, you know, accommodate as many as possible.
It says that the second Thursday in May or June, which June, we were recommending June would be the thirteenth of June.
And is everybody at the table okay with, with the way he's gonna approach that?
Fact, our, our fact meeting is the twenty-fifth, six and seven, so it won't conflict.
Okay, right. Okay, thank you.
So we're gonna target June?
You have consensus from the table that, that, that procedure, Mr. Whitson, would be great.
All right, great.
Appreciate that.
And so we'll prepare all the work and work with your staff and get everything queued up.
So, Mr. Mayor, we would bring back a annual report at that time, we would also, prior to that, we're gonna talk to the working group about our student generation rate, to show them what, how we're getting it computed, then we're going to bring that to our school board for approval, and then we're gonna notify this group on what that new student generation rate could be, as per the ILA.
And with any luck, we'd have some new GIS tools we're playing with, and we could actually visually show you where the students live, and...
Yeah, I was just thinking of something like that.
All of that kind of stuff, so...
That'd be great, the visual...
Cross our fingers, and we'll have all that pulled together by then, but we want to go through the working group first, and then back to you.
Okay, and, so we're going to enter the, the last item here, which is, well, not the last, second to last, any new business, so I'm gonna ask you to keep us within the boundaries of the side of the committee, so we don't go outside of the boundaries. So, is there any new business that we'd like to either discuss or push forward to the next meeting, so that we can have that on the record of the minutes?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Since we're almost finished here, I still had some questions on, on the figures that, that are on six and seven.
Mm-hmm.
Or actually, it's on five and seven. You have the, confused on the, the school population, the student population as of right now, has it, it looks like it's increased.
Yes.
Does that mean, is it increased by eighty-nine students, or a hundred, total one hundred and ninety-three students? And if so, is that, is that the high school, or middle school, or elementary school? I know it doesn't have a breakdown on it.
Yeah.
But if so, I mean, it could be all seniors, and they're all graduating this year.
Now, that, that number's all in for October of twenty twenty-two, for October of twenty twenty-three, I'll go back here.
Right, that was from the annual report that we, that was from last year. We did provide this, this slide here, which is the student enrollment, we look at student enrollment every October, and so this is the enrollment for October of twenty twenty-three.
Now, and the question I get when I'm on this committee or board, is that, okay, do we need new schools now, or do, in, in the report you have on page seven, it says, we, we need to be looking for our capacity, because it's almost, middle schools and high schools over capacity almost, and we need to be looking for property in a forty to seventy acres for a school. Are we doing that now, or are we?
We are.
And if so, where are we looking?
We, we are, we are exploring options for middle school, one of the options that we presented to the board was possibly converting a, an elementary school into a middle school. We, and our five-year plan tells us that, that we included, it tells us that we're looking at a new middle school and a new high school around the seven-year mark or so, so we are looking for potentially, where would, where would a high school go? And that's where we've worked with the city of Palm Coast on, maybe it's that westward expansion area, because by that time, we would be maybe building out there at that time, so...
Could we add this as an agenda item for the next discussion?
Absolutely.
I appreciate you bringing that up.
I do too, if you just, to give some clarity.
Like the property, I mean, Banelle has nothing to offer, except a lot of land, but it's not all belonged to the city of Banelle. Why aren't we, are we looking for the property to, to buy, or are we looking for the developers to, like Palm Coast did, to give the property for us to build a school? One way or another.
We're hoping to find a modern-day ITT.
It's a negotiation.
It is negotiable, and we would welcome either opportunity.
Okay, but we should still be looking for the property, maybe buying it now, then later.
Agreed.
Yes.
Those are the questions I have all the time, I mean, as far as who's paying what, and I mean, they all, most of the people that talk to me, they don't even have, their kids are already graduated and gone, and they're still paying school taxes, which they have no complaints on that, but they, they'd like to know a little bit about where their money's going, and that's what I hear.
Thank you for that. So, let's, we'll add that as a, a point, a topic, included in the next, the presentation at the next meeting, because...
That'd be great.
That, that question is always gonna be relevant, and you're always gonna be getting your constituency to be asking the question, so I think it's fairly stated, yeah. And that would be as far as property location, or?
Well, location, yes.
I think it's the process.
Possible school sites.
Location, process, because, I mean, there's a lot of variables in how you would choose, I assume.
Right, because it depends on where the housing's gonna be.
Of course.
Okay, so...
Well, the kids, and on top of that, right now, the kids can go anywhere in the county to go to school, as long as their parents drive them or whatever, and it's, you know, so I guess it depends on, on the schools, and how they're doing, as far as rating and stuff, but I know, I know they like, we, we used to have a high school in Banelle, and they, the people in Banelle would like to see another high school, either in Banelle or close to Banelle, but, I think, like you said, it has to depend on the development.
Right.
It's a great discussion.
Appreciate that. Um, let's see, so we've, that's new business, I do, I would open up the discussion to the public, I'm not sure there are any members of the public here, but this is the time for public comment, no one?